Collins from New Bethel Missionary Baptist Church. And the pledge will be done by one of our youth council members, Amber Dubasine.
Shall we pray? Father in the merciful name of Jesus, fast our Lord and our God, so thankful to you for your manifold and endless blessing. Thank you, Master, how you have brought us safe thus far, long and other days. We pray your blessing, your guidance, that you guide everything done here, done in a way that is decent, important, and we love things to be done. Pray for Amaya, all of his staff and cabinet. Pray for all of the council members, families, God. We pray for the entirety of Biloxi, of the city of Biloxi. We pray for all who are in this room. We pray for the youth, God, them in their lives, if God. Father, we pray in Jesus' name. He will bring this council, this mayor, together on one accord, that we might do the things that need to be done for the betterment of the city, state, and he from this nation. Love you, Lord. Praise you and magnify your name. Pray.
Amen. Amen. Thank you.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Master. Love you, man. Goodness in your name.
You might start some. All right. Mr. Shoemaker, you ready?
Yes, sir, I'm ready.
Mr. Gray, you ready?
Sir.
All right, council members, let's get ready to go to work. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
All right. Motion by Mr. Gray, do I have a second?
To suspend the rules.
Suspend them.
All right. Let me back up. Councilman Gray, I need a motion to suspend the rules.
I'm making a motion.
All right. Made by Mr. Gray, I have a second.
Second.
All right. Second by Mr. Nail. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. The clerk would read the revisions.
To the consent agenda, we're substituting item five N, resolution authorizing entry into a facility rental agreement with Movers and Shakers Social Club, and adding five B, resolution authorizing entry into a facility rental with Mississippi Gulf Coast Chamber of Commerce.
Need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Tisdale.
Second.
Second by Mr. Creel. Any discussion?
None.
All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Presentation, agenda, mayor's report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Welcome everyone to our first meeting in September, and particularly welcome to our great Mayor's Youth Council, twenty-five and twenty-six. So, welcome to them today. I know after that first workshop, we had a very active set of questions back there, so they're paying attention, so that's great. But I want, of course, inviting Ms. Hunt up here to do a few words.
Thank you, officer. Don't be long in the house.
We heard you, two floors down.
Yes, ma'am.
Saw your car.
We want to thank y'all for letting us be here. This is our first orientation session. This is our first ceremony. What I'd like you all to do, all of the members of the council, stand up.
All right.
Stand up. I do want you to know, you know, they don't have their fun. They were not texting. I saw some adults. They were not texting. All right. I just want you all to know, and we want to thank ourselves, a lot of the members, thank you very much, being with us. Also, we don't want to leave at four to seven. We've been here since before the war. So, we're going to leave at four to seven. So, we go back and we will do the same question, okay? And we're going to be done. So, thank you very much, and you all will see us all again.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you. I do have a couple of special guests here, Swayze and Robert Callier. Swayze is a former school board president, and we love her for the work she's done for Biloxi Public Schools, and we actually welcome you. And Robert, he's going to be on the agenda, maybe come up for a few words after, when it's your time. I'll tell you when it's... You don't have to sing, just... Okay, okay. But thank you. My last part is to please spread to the minutes the expenses of the Biloxi travel credit card. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Move on to council reports. Mr. Gray?
I'd like to thank the panel come out for the town hall meeting. We had the mayor, Fofo there, Councilman Marshall, Scott Delano, Zach Grady, Mr. Jerry Creel, PD, Major Clark was there, Biloxi Police Department, and Sheriff Matt Haley. Lot of questions was asked, and from the concerned citizens, and I think Mr. Jerry answered a lot of the questions. He put out a lot of fires in there. We got the shrimp cook-off this weekend, fifth through the seventh, Point Cadet Plaza. The Sports Hall of Fame, that was a great success. They did a great job, Jamie and Ronnie Seymour, y'all did it, and your crew, they did one... That was a great job. Playground equipment, we're trying to see where we at on this, on it. Point Cadet, I know we have that one. We're still waiting on more quotes? Is that where we're at on this one? Not a lot of people asking.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we're still waiting on that second quote. The first one we got was right shy of fifty thousand dollars, and that was just for the removal of the current equipment that's there. But then, you know, there has to be a plan. Once we remove that, are we going to go back with anything else? You know?
It's hard for...
Yes, or what type of surface we're going back? You know, hopefully something that's a little bit more maintenance friendly for us, that we can keep clean and let people to continue to enjoy that area.
Are we going to have it ready for the upcoming summer?
I would hope so. That would be definitely a goal of ours, to possibly, maybe over the winter, to get that going, and hopefully be ready to go for the springtime, once it starts getting warm.
Right. All right. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Mr. Marshall?
All right. Come back to me, please.
We'll come back to you. Mr. Nail?
What about Broadwater property? I've not seen anything going on over there as far as cleaning it up.
I'm not sure where they are with the... I haven't seen any activity either. Trimmed up, or... Trimmed up closer to the road surfaces, I think.
Okay. And Hill Park, starting to look good. It's starting to come. We ready. But what about renting the... You know where the concession stand is, where the tennis court was? I looked at that real good the other day. I think we could rent that and make some money, I believe. Concession stand, snowballs, hot dogs, hamburgers. It's just sitting there doing nothing.
We'll take a look at that.
Yeah. And moving the dog park over there where the tennis courts was. See if we can find some money.
Yeah, right where it was filled in, where the tennis courts were. It's a pretty good surface now.
Yeah, real good. That's it.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Nail. Mr. Creel?
All right. So, this weekend, Saturday, from ten AM to twelve thirty, we're going to host a little event at the dog park, and it's going to be tired dog rescue. All proceeds will go to the tired dog rescue. So, we have... There were five sisters that were adopted from tired dog, and they're having their one-year birthday party at the dog park this weekend. So, we had the Humane Society on board, but they had to back out last minute. So, tired dog rescue will be out there with adoptable dogs, if anybody's looking for a pet, but we'll be at the dog park, right there on Pops Ferry Road today. So, come on out and enjoy the day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Creel. Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, three things. The first is, we'd look at the, I guess, the lumens on the lights on between, on Howard Avenue, between Lemieux's and west down to, I guess, Kivett, maybe, or Raynor, I guess. It's just, it'd be great if that was a little better lit, just saying. I don't... It may just be bulbs. I think those are LEDs, but something that would light it up, I think it would be a little more inviting at night. The second thing is Fayard Street, and as I recall, we've not vacated any of Fayard Street. The north end runs into Bayview there at the IP. I think, is that right? Somebody give me a head nod, I think.
Mr. Gray, you got any comments on that?
It's not my board.
Mr. Marshall?
Right. So, it's still our responsibility. Okay, I wanted to be sure, right? And I know that the IP is redoing part of their parking there with some drainage and asphalt, but I'm wondering, with all those big eighteen-wheelers over the years that have crossed Fayard Street, at some point, we'll have to improve Fayard Street. Just is there any way they can help us with that, or...
We had been talked about the type of curving, the type of surface that we were going to put, that splits the new improvements and the old rock bed, too, I think. Yeah, they're putting some curving right now, that's what they said.
Okay. I just, I wasn't quite sure. I thought that we still were responsible for Fayard, but I'm just thinking, with all those big trucks over the years going back and forth and parking out there. Last thing is Ward Five meeting Monday, September eighth, at five thirty, at the Snyder Center. Look forward to a large crowd. Usually we have five or six. No, usually we have about fifty or sixty. And look forward to seeing everybody there. Then we'll have some of the directors there, and I know that there are a few questions I'm aware of that residents would like to have answered. So, Mayor, you're invited as well. Hope you can stay with us and hear the questions. Other than that, that's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale, for that outstanding Ward Five, Ward One, and Ward Two report. So, Mr. Shoemaker?
I don't have anything that exciting, but I did have a few things I was going to bring up, however, I'll hold back and I'll bring some up next week. But I will say just one thing, and I'm sure y'all know what I'm going to say, and it's every day, y'all, grass cutting. I'm getting calls, messages, and emails daily, and I know we had this discussion before, but anything we can do to expedite any grass cutting, at least on the main roads, would be very helpful. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Marshall?
To all the students here, I want to say congratulations and thank you for your participation. If it seems like I'm a little hard, it's because I'm strictly about taking care of business, and one day, I'm hoping, and I'm praying, you sitting up here, you do the same thing, to fight for your community, speak up for your community. As far as the, my dog parks, I want to talk about the two dog parks over in Ward Two. I'd like to have work... Wait a minute. I don't have no dog parks. We trying to get a real park fixed there. Okay. Mr., if you don't mind, step forward. I promise I won't ask you about any dog parks in Ward Two. We'll ask about the water fountains for the dog parks, the fire hydrants, fake fire hydrants for the dog parks. We're not asking about nothing like that.
Don't forget about the slide.
Oh, and the dog, yeah, the slide.
The slide at Henry Beck.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the dog slide. We noticed that you put the doors up over the bathrooms. Okay, that's going to help us a lot, and we thank you for that. Also, we noticed that the fence is still not fixed, but we're going... You also made it clear you would be taking care of that. We thank you for that also. I also know that the grass for the holidays, if you don't mind, you know a holiday's coming up, can we make sure that all the grasses are cut? You know, for most time, that's when the family's going to come out. They got families in town, things like that, so we'll make sure that the grass is cut for the holiday. And I was kind of disappointed that it wasn't done. There's a car that's parked in front of the fire station off Parker Street. There's a white vehicle that's parked there, been there for a while, and it has the orange sticker on it. I talked to a couple of neighbors, and they said it's been there for a couple of weeks, and they definitely want to have that removed. And it's insinuating a park, so if you can make sure that kind of like disappears.
I'll coordinate with Chief Miller and see what we can do about how that's done.
Okay. Also, that same park, the back gates, can you put some locks on those back gates? It goes into an alley in between the fields. It's like four, three, I know it's at least three back gates.
It's back behind the concession building in the facade?
Right.
Yes.
Okay, we need some locks, and those are open up. People going in and out. You look back there, you see the prayer for Delia, and that's not what we need in that community. Those are some good people over there. The next thing is going to be the, for that same park, I would like to go in and look at the concession stand also, to see what we can do with it, to make sure it's up to par, and maybe have some plans or discussion, what we can do to promote that park more. I plan to promote every park in Ward Two in East Biloxi, period. He's the same way, we want every park, we want to promote them, we want to push them, we want people to come out and enjoy the park. We spend a lot of money on those parks. We want them tip-top, we want them to be the... I don't want... This is embarrassing almost, that we had a major holiday, and to be honest with you, nobody really used our parks. And that's not where we need to be. We didn't need to be there, you know? They got family coming into town, they be heading to the park, they be booking those parks, they be getting reservation for those parks. I think that's it for you. Your officers came by, I've been watching them, I can look out my window, I can see them. They come by and they do something that six months ago they didn't do. They actually communicate with my people. They stand there, they talk to them, they encourage them to keep moving. They don't come there and they don't... They didn't watch them. They didn't come there and harass them, they didn't pick them, they grade them, make them feel bad. They asked for who they are, they found out who they are, they find out who they are, they know who some of them are, and they talk to them, they ask them to keep moving. That's all I ever asked you to do. Hello? That's all I ever asked you to do, and that's all my community ever asks. We got to try to get people arrested, we don't want people put in jail, and I want to commend you on that. I appreciate that. That's what we call community police.
I appreciate that, so I'll pass that along.
Yeah, and they were dressed sharp, they looked at sharp, they were saying, yes, sir, even to the homeless guy. Yes, sir, they talked to them nicely. I just stood there, I was just so proud of them. It made me feel so good. Man, I appreciate that. I appreciate you, I appreciate you. We'll be discussing the rules for the park, as I keep promising you every week, it's coming. We want to make sure it's done in a way that is fair amongst all the parks throughout the city. But I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes, sir. You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. As far as the streets, there are several streets that I'd like to get with... Rick, is that going to be you, sir? Oh, getting the grass on the streets, that you? I need to get what you want, I got several streets where, in my area, there are some streets like Belmont, places like that, where like basically one car can go up and down, but people complaining that the grass and the weeds on top of fences are just hanging over into the streets, they're wiggling through. So, I like to go and get a list of the streets, I like to do a ride with you, and we'll go through those streets and make sure that they're cut back, weed, and grass is cut off of them and everything. And people going through those little small streets, they live there, they pay taxes like everybody else, and they don't want their cars scratched up, tore up, and we got branches, and everything, we want to make sure that's cleaned up. Also, grass going up in the middle is, you know, the mayor went through a lot of trouble, he had fifty-five miles of sidewalk put in over there, and we got grass going up in between the cracks. I want to make sure that we clean some of that up. I had a couple of citizens make the same complaint on two different streets, and it's something that's simple that can be done. I don't know weed killer, however you guys, however they're doing it, you know? But we want to protect our fifty-five miles of our new sidewalks. And on September eighteenth, on September eighteenth, we're going to be having a ward meeting for Ward Two, and I want to make sure that all the departments are report in. They got a lot of questions, and I'm going to ask Mr. Reeve of his show, bring all his hats, and get ready for it. Okay? They can't complain too much, because I know you're going to make sure things taken care of. I think it's going to be at the Greenwich Center, which is in his war, not in my war. But I do have a... I got the best, I got the best facility in the city of Biloxi in Ward Two. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Marshall. I got a few things. Destiny Plantation, this is kind of some old business, but, and this has to do, not with tree trimming, but there's a little drainage issue by the bridge. There were some crews out there, I don't know whose crews they were, but on the other side, so Destiny kind of is a U, the road that goes in there on the east side, and then there's the west side by Morris Strickland's home, there's a little ridaway, kind of a ditch area, drainage area as well. I know Public Works was in there two or three years ago, but they feel that it's clogged up, because every time a little bit of rain, everything's backing up. So, if I could just have somebody maybe go and inspect it to see if there's an issue out there. Little bit of speeding on Live Oak by the Bay, I'm getting some complaints. Chief, I don't know if anybody's called those in. Live Oak by the Bay off of Brody Road, there's some, I'm getting quite a few complaints out of there. There's some construction going on in the back, so I don't know if it's related to that, that the workers are coming out of there, but it seems to get, it's getting a little tense with some of the residents in there. Drudging update, if I can get a dredging update from Christie and Brazier Bayou?
So, as we talk on, as I told y'all a couple of weeks ago, that he had to pull out to go get a smaller dredge barge, because the big barge was too shallow. I did get a report from him today that they are waiting, his smaller barge has been in the shop, worked on, the spuds are getting stuck. I don't, I don't know exactly how all that works, but he is expecting to have it back by the end of next week.
Okay.
So, we'll keep on him and make sure he shows back up, but as soon as he gets his barge out of the shop and get it back working, he'll have it in there.
I got one more drainage issue. Belmont Gardens.
Yes.
They're kind of below some of the businesses, and there's a big canal behind the residence, it's kind of apartments for seniors, and it's been overflowing the banks quite a bit, and actually coming into the houses against the doors and walls. Is there any way we can make that a priority?
We've got it on our list, and we'll take a look at it as soon as we can get out there.
You can see the water line, you can see the water line on the side of the wall.
I did talk to them, and she said that those apartments in the back, that they can't even lease them anymore, because the water gets into those units.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we'll do our best to get out there as quickly as possible.
Okay. Sounds good. The only other comment I have is Sherwood Trailer Park. They have a question on a couple of things. I don't know if we do this. They got two main meters in there, and then they charge the residents a rate. They were wondering, do we do individual meters for trailers? Do we do that? What's our policy? We do, so can I refer him, just give him a number? Do I give him Rick's, or do I give him Craig Ross, or who?
I'll just give him mine.
I'll give him yours, okay. And the reason they're questioning it, there was a mix-up in commercial and residential that they charged them for, and then they had to bill them for like three or five thousand dollars more, and they went ahead and paid it, but they charged the residents based on their billing, and they kind of had to eat that, and then they went up on the rates for the residents, tried to recoup it. And they want to make sure, they said their rates that they're paying now doesn't look any different than it was before, so they want to make sure they don't get another surprise. So, if somebody can, I'll refer them to you, and then y'all can kind of look at the particulars and sort it out. That concludes my report. We'll move on to the public agenda. This is citizens' comments, total of forty-five minutes. You have three, forty-five minutes total. Each individual has up to three minutes. When the three minutes expires, you'll hear a little bell. You hear a little bell, okay? And kind of wrap it up, if you don't mind. This is not a question and answer, so you can just talk on any subject and state your opinion. Make sure you sign in your name and address, and state it clearly for the clerk to record. So, I'll start on this side of the room, my left, your right. Just raise your hand if you want to be recognized to speak. Anyone? I'll move over to my right, your left. Anybody would like to speak? No one? Anybody in the back of the room? All right, that was easy. Citizens' comments is now closed. We'll move on to the policy agenda. The clerk would start off with item A.
Resolution appointing Robert Callier Ward Four representative to the Biloxi Planning Commission.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Creel?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Creel?
If I could get Mr. Callier and Ms. Swayze to come on up here real quick, so we can put you in, put you in front of the firing squad real quick, you know? They're going on the planning commission right here, so... And I say "they" is because Swayze is really in charge.
That's a good-looking couple, isn't it?
Right, right. Now, Robert's been a good friend, a dear friend for a long time, and I know he's been even closer with the mayor for longer. So, I commend you on your choice. He can't be, you can't pick a better Ward Four resident, a dear friend, and a lead singer of a band, too. So, Mayor, would you like to add anything?
No, like I said, been close friends of mine forever, and we go back long ways, you know? Probably DNA, same DNA some point in time, but a little bit of East Biloxi, we wouldn't call it East Biloxi, but no, Swayze's been a champ, serving as school board, and of course, you know, the family is, Jake, he was a baby when I first ran for something, I think, we know who that was. But no doubt that he's got Biloxi tattooed and printed, everything you can think of, and so does Swayze. So, appreciative of you taking, you know, this chance to serve Biloxi. I appreciate that. Thank you all. Love it, man.
I would encourage my fellow council members to support us on this.
Well, I want to hear from them. Pick up that microphone, tell us your expectation. What you going to do for us?
Listen, he's going to listen.
First of all, the reason why I showed up today is because I wanted to make sure it was not my face, but just that the last time that Fofo called me about eight years ago, he called me on the phone, he said, hey, cuz, and I call him Mr. Mayor, I call him that, even though if I didn't vote for him. Anyway. But he told me, he said, he goes, Kenny Holloway just resigned from the school board, and we need somebody who's smart, intuitive, and understands education in this, in Biloxi. And I went, well, thank you. He said, let me talk to your wife.
That's your truth.
Yeah, it's true. But I'm honored. And, sir, Mr. Marshall, I'm from East Biloxi. My family's name's down there, and we had, my family had a restaurant down on Oak Street and Howard, then Howard Avenue, and I almost drowned in Camille. And the one thing, I appreciate your passion and your courage, but the one thing that hurts me more than anything is not a fire truck. After Camille, we, we rebuilt everything. I go down there, my heart's broken. You can have a hundred fire trucks, there's no houses. We've got to get people down there. That's my life. I am proud to be from East Biloxi, and I appreciate your passion, both you gentlemen. But the one thing we did after Camille with no help from the government, there wasn't subsidies as we had, we did it on our own, and we rebuilt it. My family was instrumental in building St. Michael's Church. I went to St. Michael's School, and I got so many beatings from nuns, I'm scared of penguins now. But I'm just saying, I appreciate your passion, but we need to get families back down there. I want to go back down to East Biloxi as a community, and I'll do everything in my power to bring my community back to you. Gentlemen, thank you for your time.
Thanks.
All right, need a motion for the consent agenda?
We got a vote here.
Oh, I'm sorry. We got to vote on you, Mr. Collier.
Yeah.
All right, any other discussion? They're being known.
Yeah, 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 yeah. If your wife is smarter than you, oh man, oh man. We're forgiven for that one. Appreciate your support. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Call for the question, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimous? Yeah. Call for the consent agenda, I need a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Tisdale, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Creel, Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, I don't have a question about any of the items, I will have some exceptions later, after, after we approve it as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale, Mr. Creel.
So a quick question on 5C and 5K. So I don't know, someone, Chief Miller would, would answer those. So 5C, the, the items that were lost or stolen, that's, that's a lot of items, or was it just over time, or is that at one time, or?
No, that's, that's, most of those items weren't really lost, most of those items were turned in, or whatever, something happened with the paperwork, most of those were probably sold at auction.
Okay.
Yeah, but over the years, you know.
They're not there anymore.
Thing, we tried to get everything straight this year.
Okay.
With a, with a new management system, and so some of that stuff just popped up, and we had to do something with it.
And then on K, is that the monitoring system, the traffic monitoring system?
It is.
Can you?
That's the, the, the boards that we put out that judge the speed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Traffic counts and all.
I just, I wanted to make sure wasn't the, the traffic cameras, or?
No, no, it's something completely different.
Okay.
Just the ability to go somewhere and do a traffic study in a neighborhood.
Got you, perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Any councilmen have any other items they want to talk about?
Hold on one second.
Mr. Creel, you still have the floor?
Uh, hold on a second.
All right.
So, that's, that's all I got.
All right. Mr. Nail?
Where is it at?
T.
On, uh, yes.
Yes.
Yes, um, they're asking for more time for rain delays?
Good evening, council. Yes, in your question, Councilman Nail was 5S. We typically provide weather days based on Kessler Air Force Base's data, they send it to us every month on how many rain days, add weather days, and we track that versus what's in our contract limits, and every so often, we do a, a catch-up of weather days, and this is just what that is, there's, I think it extends from January to July of this year of all of our weather events, so we're, we recommend it based on what Kessler meteorological data is, to provide the contractor 27 additional days to their contract due to that.
So how many days are they asking for right now?
27 in this, we, we recommend it based on Kessler's weather days. Now, there is a request by this contractor for additional time related to Camilla Street and Southern Avenue with some design issues, and we're working through that right now to see what we believe is equitable, that's not related to this one, sir. This is purely weather days, based on Kessler's information.
I'll tell you, I ride by there all the time, when it's dry, and I don't see nobody out there working.
Yes, sir, and we, 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 we share the same concern.
What if we don't give it to them? What happens?
Well, for this one at least, I'd recommend do it, I would recommend the council to approve it, just because it's a.
Quantitative.
Not related, it's pro forma basically, it's not related to their work or anything, it's really, it's just purely related to the contractual requirements, allowance, and Kessler's, it's not contractor's request, it's purely, this is what's allowed by the contract. If there's requests related to, from the contractor, related to other items, not related to the weather, then I think that's an opportunity for the council to maybe dive more into it, see if you agree.
In, in every case, they're paid on a giant spreadsheet on what they actually install, but there's a contract limit, number of days that you finish between this point and that point, and I think he's extended it by 27 days because of weather. Now, the weather, and Walt, I don't know whether, you know, if you lose a day, it usually takes another day before you can start on the third day, so that's, there may be some of that in there, too. But little, in each case of these capital projects that I've been involved with, I mean, significant, you know, the, the end date was pushed pretty, pretty far out, in each one of those cases, I think, north contract and some of these others, too.
Well, I don't think 20, 23 days is going to do them no good.
27, 27, yes, sir.
They still ain't going to do it.
No, sir, they do have a, like I said, a request in for additional time related to Camilla Street and Southern Avenue, fairly large requests, and that's why it's taken us some time to look back at what our, our yards are field, that's in project representative. Am I breathing into it? What our field representatives have documented as eligible workdays, but there were some design issues on Camilla Street due to MDOT doing a lot of overlaying from Highway 90 a little bit up Camilla Street over the years. Projects were first completed in their design, I believe, in 2014, and so MDOT has done a lot of work down in that area, and it's, it changed some of the tie-in points on Camilla Street, and we had to basically redesign that road to make it tie.
There were some surprises there also with regard to the foundation that used to be on the crosswalk, and I think they broke some equipment, didn't they, Walt, in trying to?
Yes, sir, if you look back at the old tourist postcards that you used to get, like for the Sun and Sand, they, I believe we actually found one of the foundations for that walkway that went over Highway 90 from Sun and Sand days.
Yep, exactly, and there was like 15 feet of solid concrete, reinforced concrete, and they broke a few.
Yeah.
Boring machines there, too.
I think the main problem with these guys is, they just don't clean up behind themselves. They take a long time to clean up one little pile of dirt.
Yeah, we, we know, that's the truth, I mean, that's, that's the nature of their businesses, not just that one, but I, I've been fighting it for 10 years, contractors, and, you know, we try, we try to get their attention by liquidated damages and some of these other things, so that's, you know, some sort of.
Yeah.
Thing, but anyway.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on this item?
Real quick, so this, this doesn't have anything to do with them pulling the, the pavers off and, and coming back in four weeks, as we had discussed at a previous meeting, where they, they pulled their, their guys off and moved them to another area, and it was going to be four weeks before they got back to, I think that is Camilla and Beauvoir paving.
Southern, too, southern.
And, and southern, so.
Yes, just the rain delays that they'd be.
So this doesn't have anything to do with the, them pulling people off of the?
No, sir, it's purely just weather, and again, it's all independent data from Kessler Air Force Base, we don't generate it, the contractor, Kessler sends it out to us once a month, we look at it, and there's a certain threshold, which if it exceeds that much threshold, like rain or snow, if you consider January, or force majeure events, there, the contract allows, or almost requires you to grant that contractor time for that issue. Now, other issues, as you were asking there, councilman, it's not related to this, no, sir.
Okay, so in, in this, the, the delays, this is a 27-day delay, correct?
Well, not, not delay, sir, it's just, it's a granting of time, it's not a delay.
Okay, so it's granting them an additional 27 days?
Just pure due to weather.
Okay.
But not a delay, not a delay issue like we're discussing with Camilla Street, and we had some issues with the MDOT overlays and the design tying in, so we redesigned that street.
Based on the detail in here, I think the, the delays total up to 109 days, is that all weather-related?
Well, they're not.
Not delays, I apologize, the extensions, is up to 109 days.
Yes, sir. Some of it, again, is weather, some of it is, as, as the mayor brought up, where we had foundations that were unknown, or they weren't in the, the design, the original design, the Sun and Sand, you know, the designers, I guess, didn't look that far back into the history of the 50s and 60s and 70s of Biloxi, I wouldn't expect them to, but they do get some days for those kind of things, but those are usually money issues that they want more than anything else.
Okay.
Warranted monies, we, we go through that pretty tight also.
Perfect, thank you.
I got a question, so if they, if they, notwithstanding those adjustments, if they run over the contract time, there are damages that we can, are there damages for not performing in a timely manner that we can recoup anything, or, or not?
We don't recoup it, and we don't recoup monies, there's, the contract allows for liquidated damages, it's not a, we don't recoup.
Do we get compensated if they don't finish it in a timely manner?
Don't get compensated, no, sir.
So they can take as much time as they want?
No, sir.
Liquidated damages.
That's, that's what I meant, we don't pay them if they don't complete it.
We still pay them, we just don't pay. We pay them what is owed on their application, less any amounts of monies, we don't believe that they are warranted at that time. So if you get in the case like a, a previous contractor where they ran well over the contract limits, then every pay application, we reduce their pay application by the value of the liquidated damages, which is a amount of money per day.
Got you, so we do reduce their payment if they.
Yes, sir.
If they don't finish it in a lot of time.
Yes, sir, but it's not a gain to the city or anything like that, yes, sir.
Understood, okay.
We don't get it from anybody, it's, it's not a, it's not a benefit to us.
Got you, man. Yes, noted. Any other questions?
Yeah, why, why are you up here? How much, this is the same company that's doing St. Michael's project, too, right?
Sure.
So when are they going to finish the St. Michael's? It sounds like they just got too many projects going on, because they're doing the, the Beauvoir, and they're doing the Posfair Extension, right?
Yes, sir, amongst others on the coast.
Right, so they're putting off St. Michael's and Beauvoir to do Posfair Extension?
I think they're going through their punch list at this point for St. Michael's 1-2.
If council members, a few council meetings ago, we formalized into the record the St. Michael's project in the punch list.
Right.
That was presented to council, as we see, that we presented to council as this is work that we felt should have been done by the contractor, and so right now, we're in discussions with the administration on how to proceed forward to get everybody to agree to complete the work that we believe is necessary, and that's a discussion with our administration and to carry that out. But as far as that work, everything is complete except for the punch list, which there's some major, there's some items which we have concern, there's some items which are not as significant, but it is required in the contract.
Now, are we charging liquidated damages because they're not done?
Not at this time, sir, we're, we're, again, we're, we're having those discussions with the administration, and there's some contractual issues we're trying to look at to see if there are any possibilities of LDs, or if it's warranted at all.
Right, I mean, because I know right there on Howard Avenue, they still got the dirt and stuff piled up, they still got manholes laying around, you know, things that could be cleaned up, at least help Biloxi look a little better.
Yes, sir.
You know.
That's been, it's been a fairly problematic with, on this side with, you know, so much of our soils, when you overturn them, it's got, you know, all of our oyster reefs, a lot of oyster shells in there, which, and rocks, which, so that tends to be problematic if they're not rated properly, becomes a problem later when you're trying to maintain.
A lot of surprises, especially when we talk about Rose Street to, was it Rose Street to Crawford Street? We ran over, at about 19 feet down, you know, you know how many oyster shells are on in Biloxi? 19 feet down, they ran into 2,500 cubic yards of pooled Chris Oak that we had to remove, and it took us, how many months? Three months?
A significant amount, because you got.
Had to haul off 2,500 cubic yards, nobody knew about that, until you got down there and started pumping it. That was 2,500 cubic yards that went to a land, a hazardous waste landfill in Arkansas. So those are the kinds of things that, you know, you run across in the course, but doubt specifically, between Crawford Street or Rosetti Street and Crawford Street. 2,500 yards of Chris Oak. They use Chris Oak to, to keep the dust on the oyster shells that were the roads, you know, we are 2,326 years old, and I think a lot of those oyster shells, 19, this ran 19 feet down, that's where it sipped, you know.
It all pulled down into that area, you know, the oysters just allowed it to pull down into a spot, and we came across during construction.
Right, right.
That was during this project.
Right, but all that's done, now it's time to, now it's time to finish the project.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, there's some cleanup and some punch list stuff, I mean, it's all, you know, Walt's group manages that, as well as Neil Schaefer, so they're not going to get away with not cleaning it up.
Right, I mean, and I know we still, we talked about some sidewalks and different driveways and stuff that needed to be done.
Yes, sir, we've got one on Crawford, which we've brought to their attention, about the aprons, I believe you, you might have mentioned it to me, we, we do have it down, that work needs to be done, plus some other items that are on the punch list.
Yeah, well, hopefully in the future, we can, instead of having it skip around, we can do aprons down the whole road, one that makes it look uniform and nice when people turn on it, so as a concrete here, rock there, grass here, so maybe that's something in the future we can look at, make it look good whenever people riding around looking for a piece of property to build a house on.
Thank you, council.
All I have.
Any other items for the consent? Anybody have anything else on the consent? Right, item A.
Consent agenda.
Right, item A. Resolution appointing.
We got T.
Five, we don't, that's where you're at, right?
Item A.
Five A.
Reappointing Deborah McGee.
Right.
Okay.
All right. Ms. McGee. You just going to throw your hand up, right? Okay, have a seat.
Have a seat, okay.
All right, to everybody who don't realize, this is Ms. Deborah McGee, she's a local citizen for East Biloxi, she's a fighter for East Biloxi, you might see her at any event. Matter of fact, they're doing something good for the community, this young lady's there, she don't ask for pay, she just, just jumps in no matter what, and she's been doing a very good job on the, on the, on the planning commission. I was not the first person to appoint her, but I've been watching her, I believe the mayor had support for her also, that's something he and I both agree on, see, we're getting somewhere, we're getting somewhere, yeah, so you, you're that, you're the bridge that brings us together. I agree with him, he did a good, he did, he did something great for East Biloxi when he chose you, I appreciate you, keep up the good work. I do have a concern, and I dish it out both ways, we've been having some things come before us that's put some of our council members on the spot, and I know we don't want to influence you in any kind of way, but we do respect that you will look at the laws, look at the communities, and put the communities and the laws first, making sure that the people, if you ask the question as if if you was living there yourself, would you want that gas station on your corner? If you was living there, would you want, just saying, that jukehouse on your corner? So things like that, we ask that, you know, and if you, by you now being someone that's been on there for a little bit of a term, you know, keep in mind that we, what comes before us, it puts us on the spot, and we want to make sure that, that you put all the thoughts in. I know you've been doing, I watched you, I know you do that already, but if you can touch one of your other people sitting on the board with you, just remind them, hey, I don't think them neighbors going to like that, we would appreciate it. I don't know if I speak for everybody, if anybody else don't agree with that, speak up and let me know.
You got a unanimous support.
Yeah, I did, just a quick comment, I don't, I don't know if it's appropriate to phrase it the way that you did, Mr. Marshall, I know Ms. McGee, she does a great job on the planning commission, I see her at all the planning commission meetings, thank you for being here tonight, but I know that we have to remain impartial as we hear all of, all of these developments that come before us, so we sit as a deliberative body to do the right thing, and we have to be objective, that's all, thank you.
I second what he just said, he cleaned it up for me, but you understand, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Biloxi, I love what you, I'm over Biloxi, and thank all of you.
All right. Go ahead.
Any other items?
Oh, I'm good.
You're good, okay. There being no other question, all in favor of the consent? I'll take the exceptions next. All in favor?
I think.
Opposed? Okay, passes unanimous, now we get the exceptions, we'll start with Mr. Shoemaker, any exceptions?
I do, yes, sir, I have a couple of them.
Go ahead.
I got four, actually, F, L.
Mr. Creel?
Yes, uh, four exceptions, uh, it'll be items F, L, N, and V.
You got those, Carrie? Mr. Nail?
Uh, nothing.
F.
Mr. Marshall?
I'll, um, on F.
On M?
F, F. Resolution authorized renewal of agreement with, uh, key impact strategies.
Okay. F. You got that, Carrie? F, okay. Mr. Gray?
Do you have any exceptions?
Um, yeah, N and L.
N and L. And I have no exceptions. Move on to code enforcement hearings, we'll go ahead and open those up.
Item A on the agenda, EIF 10 LLC, 2007 Brazier Road, that case has been resolved. Item B, Jack D. Vincent Jr., 376 Mayo Street, that case has been resolved. Item C, Ford Bayou, Fort Bayou Marine LLC, 0 Nixon Street, that case has been resolved. Item D, Community Missionary Baptist Church, 0 Nixon Street, that case has been resolved. Item E, Roger H. Nguyen and, uh, An C Lee, 172 Rosetti Street, that case has been resolved. Item F, Team Raul LLC, 1680 Pass Road, this property's still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of Team Raul LLC, 1680 Pass Road? There being no one, this case is closed.
Item G, Deena Properties LLC, 120 Fayard Street, this property's still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of Deena Properties LLC, 120 Fayard Street? There being no one, this case is closed.
Item H, Kang Van Nguyen, 321 Penny Avenue, that case has been resolved. Item I, Akron Cleveland Construction Group, 197 Claiborne Street, this property's still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of Akron Cleveland Construction Group, 197 Claiborne Street? All right, there being no one, this case is closed.
Item J, Baptist Church of Biloxi, 229 Coon Street, this property's still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of Baptist Church of Biloxi, 229 Coon Street?
Let me mention one other thing too. Uh, this is a second piece of property that is listed on the rolls as Baptist Church of Biloxi and in both cases, the church contacted us and said that that's not their property. So we're, we're not sure, we just know that it's in violation.
Okay. Uh, there being no one, this case is closed.
Wait, wait, wait. Say that again.
We've had two, this is a second piece of property that we've had come before the city council.
Yeah, one of them was on Baptist Alley, right?
Uh-huh. And, and in both cases, we were contacted by the church that said that they don't own it, but it still shows up on the tax rolls that they own the property. So we're just, we move forward with it, we clean it up and we add it back to the taxes.
Okay, you know, there's a lot of Baptist churches, the same name, does the address listed on there, anything, is the owner's address?
I'm sorry, Mr. Marshall, I didn't.
Okay. Does the address, what address does it show for the owner?
Um, hang on just a minute. It shows the address of the owner is 643 Division Street, Biloxi, Mississippi.
Is it 643? Where is 643 at?
Baptist Church of Biloxi, 643 Division Street is the address that is on the tax rolls as the owner, so.
And you say you contact, they contacted you?
They contacted us in both cases and said that they do not own these properties.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, this case is closed.
Item K, Sue F. Davis, 10109 East Shore Cash Drive, that case has been resolved. Item L, Ann Van Lee, Ontho T. Don, 421 Crusus Street, that property's been resolved.
Thank God.
Item, uh, M, CAT Enterprises LLC, 1631 East Howard Avenue, that case has been resolved. Item N, Lance Heath and Chad St. Amott, 345 Oak Street, that case has been resolved. Item O, Ruby J. Howard Life Estate, 324 Bone Street, that case has been resolved. Item P, Brandon Rue, 2168 Alice Drive, that case has been resolved. And item Q, Mark A. Robinson, 230 Baptist Alley, that case has been resolved.
Thank you, Director. Code enforcement hearings are now closed. Need a motion for the routine?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Tisdale, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Creel, discussion, Mr. Tisdale?
Uh, nothing, thank you.
Mr. Creel?
Nothing further.
All right. Uh, Chair entertain a motion to, what?
Got a vote.
Oh, we got a vote on the routine. All in favor of the routine? Those opposed? Motion carries? Uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Tisdale?
Second.
Second by Mr. Creel, any discussion? All in favor? Those opposed?
Other than...